Thank you, Agenda Item Number Two, Public Input. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak this evening? Anyone from the public? Last time, anyone from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Number Three. Meeting called to order. Roll call, please.
Dr. Domingo?
Absent.
Mrs. Donovan?
Present.
Mr. Lazo?
Excused.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Present.
Dr. O'Leary?
Present.
Mrs. Principay?
Present.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Present.
Five present, one excused, one absent.
No, she's here. Dr. Domingo just walked in.
She's here. Thank you. Agenda Item Number Five, Approval of Minutes of Regular School Committee, September 25th, 2012. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there any corrections or errors? Seeing none, all those in favor? All those in favor of the minutes?
Abstain.
Abstaining from the minutes? Okay. Two abstentions. I have no announcements this evening. Agenda Item Number Seven, School Committee, sorry, Reports, Representative of the Student Advisory Committee, Ms. Faith Macharia. Hi, Faith.
Hello. So, there's been a lot going on at Southbridge High. On Friday, last Friday, the Southbridge High football team had their second win against David Proudty, which was really great. On Sunday, the marching band marched at Shrewsbury Street in Oyster, and they did a great job representing our school. Today, twenty-two students, juniors and seniors, actually went to a college fair in a high school in Connecticut, and it was really great. They got to meet admissions officers from all over the place, and it was a great opportunity for them, so thank you to those who organized it. Homecoming for the Southbridge High School will be the nineteenth, the nineteenth, and since this year is a little hectic, everything will be minimized, and we'll have five booths at the football game, and so just come and have fun with the students. November eighth will be an Evening of the Earths, so the band, the chorus, will be performing. We'll have the theater perform too, and the, excuse me, the art will have, the art club will have a display out there too. All classes are also gearing for the Thanksgiving rally, which is near Thanksgiving time, and the freshmen are really looking forward to the advisory so that they can start this kid and stuff, and it will be great. And there is also an astronomy club, which starts tomorrow, and it's a great opportunity for the kids to learn about the galaxy and the stars, and it's open to everyone, so urge your kids to join it. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, School Committee Reports. A, Curriculum Subcommittee, Mrs. Donovan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a reminder that we'll be holding our first meeting for the Curriculum Subcommittee on Monday, October fifteenth, at seven PM in the Larry Hyman Conference Room. At that time, we'll introduce our members of the Subcommittee, we'll introduce members of our curriculum, the district's curriculum team, and then hopefully have discussions about ways to engage parents and inform families about our district accelerated improvement plan, the Southbridge standard, as well as the Massachusetts Frameworks and Common Core standards. And then finally, in addition to that, we will talk again about bringing, talk about creationism in the classroom. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. B, Curriculum Policy Subcommittee, I'm gonna pass it over to Mrs. McLaughlin.
Thank you. We had a Policy Subcommittee meeting recently, what was the date? Sorry. I think it was October third, we had a Policy Subcommittee meeting, and we received a packet of information from the Mass Association of School Committees recommending certain policy changes to comply with recent changes in the law in some instances, and some updated changes to the current policies that exist. I'll be talking more about those probably as we address those in, under new business.
Thank you. C, Budget, Facilities and Transportation Subcommittee, Ms. Dr. Domingo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The committee held a meeting last week on October fourth. We discussed, as we did in an open session of the meeting of the whole, the status of the 2011-2012 school budget and the surplus that we were not aware of essentially that we ended with. The business manager is putting together a plan to see whether the town will allow us to re-acquire some of these funds for the lists of items that we have presented already, and I think that went very well. We have reviewed the current budget. We will be receiving, hopefully within a month, a report on the current status of twelve-thirteen budget. We have the assurance of our business manager that everything is as it was predicted, and the numbers still hold as we have approved them. We went through a few other items. Maybe the last one that might be of the most interest for the community is utilization of the old Southbridge High School building, and what has happened since we have vacated and moved to the new building, and what the plans for the future are to occupy the building. We have requested that the superintendent and the business office prepare, if you wish, a community briefing update on the activities taking place and the future plans for that building. I think that's gonna be informational for everyone. We have not scheduled our next meeting.
Thank you. D, Collective Bargaining Subcommittee, Mrs. Principay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was in touch with the President of the Southbridge Education Association recently, and we are going to have our opening meeting, opening negotiations with the teachers in the very near future. I will be checking with our superintendent's schedule to see what's available, most likely be either next Wednesday or possibly the Wednesday after, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. And lastly, E, Communication Family and Community Engagement Subcommittee, Mrs. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm currently working on putting an agenda together and hope to post a meeting in the next day or so. I don't yet wanna throw a date out, but I will get that information to the public as soon as a date's been chosen.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Nine, Presentations, Summary of the Opening of School, Eastford Road School, Mrs. Diane Shaw.
I don't know if it's on. Okay, great. Good evening, and thank you for having me. The Eastford Road School opened beautifully on our first day, September ninth. We had a little bit of a late beginning because we had our kindergarten teachers and our paraprofessionals, along with our preschool teachers and our paraprofessionals being trained for our MICA, which is the Massachusetts Kindergarten Entry Assessment Tests that we need now to, need to have, assessments that we have. So, that training was held on September fourth, when all the other children started schools, grades one through twelve, and that was very successful on that training. But it's a big job for the kindergarten preschool teachers to make a portfolio for every student in our school, so that's a big job. They have to have the cameras that we're waiting on and the scanners to really put in their information into the computers and then get all their data. They have ten areas where they are, where they have being, you know, learning objectives. Of those objectives, there are thirty-eight objectives, two of which are for our children that are considered ELL students that, on their language. So those, it's a big, a big change for our teachers, and a lot of work. But our summer school ended this year. It was a nice transition, having the first grades move out of our school through the summer. We thank our custodial and maintenance staff for that, for their help in that transition. We thank our summer school staff for their great work this summer with our students. Mrs. Cody did such a great job all summer with myself, and we collecting all of our kindergarten packets for registration and our preschool, we're learning all the preschool work that we hadn't done, because it was always done from central office prior to this, so that was new for us. The bus situation was wonderful, having the four buses. We thank you so much for that, for Eastford Road School. Having the kindergarten children on their own buses has been very successful. Our first day was a little bit worrisome, but after that, day two was perfect. So that was excellent. We had the YMCA bus as well, so we have the five buses, so it's real nice having the kindergarten students on their own bus. We have our thanks to the AA Transportation for having our students given the opportunities. They came on our kindergarten orientation. We had all of our parents and families for kindergarten come in. I spoke with them all about curriculum assessment, our school rules, our different procedures for the school, calling in and everything, so that went beautifully, and they spent time in the kindergarten classrooms and worked with the teachers, and the children had a good time. And AA Transportation provided a bus for us that day, and the parents and the children were able to go on the bus. And Mr. O'Coin, our school counselor, he gave the rules for the bus and taught them many things about being nice children on the bus. We also thank AA Transportation for having our, the first day of school, I think, we had AA Transportation give us a bus as well, because our PBIS team, that's our school base, our positive behavior, structural support team, they gave us the bus for that, so the children were, worked with that team of educators, and were able to get the rules for our hallways, our cafeteria, our playground, the bus, and also the bathrooms, where they need to know the best behaviors of our school. So that was very, very good, and we thank them for that. Let's see, what else? We've been have, we had our, the children are learning their various songs for our character education. This month was respect, and that works along with our PBIS team, and they're learning about good manners. And next month, we'll be having, for this month of October, we'll have our responsibility traits. The children also have their, they had their DIBELS benchmark assessments, and the data teams have been going over that data, and we're doing a data analysis at this present time on DIBELS, and we'll have our math assessment going along with the ANET, that is October eleventh, so our math assessment will begin on Thursday, and we'll go into next week, and then we'll have our data teams look at that data next Wednesday and Friday. We have been celebrating our Hispanic Heritage Month from September fifteenth to October fifteenth. Children are learning many songs, and in Spanish and English, and they have their songs that they'll be singing at nine o'clock on Friday. We thank the fire department. They're going to be giving us two presentations, one at nine o'clock on Thursday, this Thursday, and one at twelve-thirty, so we thank them. The children love to see them, the officers come and share their knowledge with the children and that important information. Our kindergarten open house went beautifully. We had over a hundred and twenty families of our hundred and eighty-seven kindergarten families come, and they had a great time. They had a lot of positive feedback to myself, to teachers, and our staff, and I thank everyone for coming and being involved in that, so that was a great opportunity. And the PTA was wonderful, and they had a wonderful book fair set up for the parents, and it was very successful as well. We thank the PTA for all they do. Our preschool open house is Thursday night. Everyone's welcome, from six to seven-thirty, so our preschool children and their families will make a nice treasure box and decorate it, and they'll have stories read by the teachers, and we'll have a sharing of that evening together. And the field trip for the preschools was a rain date last week, so they will be going on their field trip hopefully on October seventeenth to the Westview Os Creamery, which is in Munson. Any questions?
Anyone? Mrs. Donovan?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Shaw. You've been very busy.
Yes, we are.
I just had a few questions, a couple of questions. The new MICA assessment portfolios that you're referring to, that's new this year, is that an ongoing thing? Have the children, have these portfolio, has the data for these portfolios already been created, or is that something that will be coming down the pike?
The MICA, what we call the MICA, is mandated by the state. The state mandated this because we are a Level Four school, school district. We are one of the first of twenty-six schools that are mandated to, as the first cohort, to initiate this MICA testing this year. The state wants data, because they have data from grade three through grade twelve for MCAS, however, they don't have data from birth through grade three, and they want to initiate this so that they can now gather information from if a child is in preschool. I've been working with the Head Start Early Intervention, the YMCA preschool, through our Cal Institute, through grant writings, and through this MICA training for that whole, getting the picture of a whole child, the whole child from birth through our, hopefully our early childhood center and into the first and second grade.
If I could suggest, maybe at a later meeting, we'll have some teachers from Eastford Road come and present what that looks like. That might be informational for the committee as well as the public. It's pretty extensive.
It is extensive. It's a lot of work, and they test, like I said, in ten different areas for cognitive, language, literacy, math.
Well, you had mentioned that they were waiting for the cameras and the scanners, so I was just wondering, has the testing already taken place? Have these children been tested yet? Now you're just waiting to input the data, or are we not at that stage yet?
No, we're not there. We're going to have our, have their first input of information where kindergarten has been assessed. Usually, they have their January and June assessments, not like the other grades, so we'll have all of that ready for, most of the time, most of the information that they're getting in the current tests we have, such as DIBELS and our math assessments, they will be able to use that information and just plug it into the computer and input that data. That'll answer a lot of the literacy and math questions that they have currently, anecdotal records that they may be keeping, or their own observational records. So, that information will answer many of the social-emotional areas of the child's growth, and, you know, the gym teacher, the art teacher, will also have areas that they can help the teachers with showing proof of growth in those areas.
I think that's a wonderful thing, to get the kids from day one and rather than, and work towards that, so perhaps while they're at the third grade, then the MCAS score, you know, could be better than what it is if they're just going into it stone cold. It's like an early intervention technique, and I think that's very good. You mentioned the math assessment on October eleventh through ANET, in part of my ignorance, is it strictly just math for ANET, or is it ELA as well?
No, actually, it's not an ANET test.
No, it's not. Not for our grade.
ANET is doing two through eight, but we have created a local math assessment. We've had this for a while. We created the math assessment, the teachers did, as well as DIBELS at the elementary level, kindergarten level, and first grade level. So, ANET only works in grades two through eight.
Two through eight, okay.
But we have corresponded the testing dates, just to make sure things.
Just the dates that correspond.
And, Madam Chair, I just have one further question. I know that new this year, there is no longer a parent liaison at Eastford Road School. How are you finding that? Are you missing having a person there for translation and other issues? Is that a problem?
Yes, we do miss it. I mean, Maria was great having Mrs. Fontaine. She was a great help. It's difficult to, you know, have the, have to bother the classroom sometimes. Mr. O'Coin is helpful too. He does speak some Spanish, the fluent Spanish. We have Mrs. Melendez for our ELL paraprofessional, Mrs. Medina is a classroom paraprofessional, Mrs. Jolyn also in pre-K, so it's difficult just trying to call those classes and taking them out of the class to help us sometimes, but we try to plan around it if possible, whenever possible.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Seeing none, thank you, Mrs. Shaw.
Thank you so much.
Welcome. Agenda Item Number Ten, Report of the Superintendent.
The only thing I have tonight is just recognition of the staff and students at Southbridge Middle High School for the ribbon-cutting ceremony that occurred a couple weeks ago. It was a great event, a lot of student involvement, and I know that the, one of the subcommittees is planning a bigger blowout in the spring for the whole community to celebrate the new building and its accomplishments throughout this year, but I just thought it was very nice the way the band and the chorus and everybody was involved, and I was particularly happy with the quality of what I heard from our students that night. So, I really wanna thank Faith and her peers for their hard work to get ready for that. Thank you.
Agenda Item Number Eleven, Report of the Director of Financial and Operations, Finance and Operations, Mr. Wiggins?
Actually, most of my items are under action, so no report.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Twelve, School Committee Actions. A, Vote to Approve a Donation of a Wheelchair to Charlton Street School.
It's so moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. Domingo?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Six yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. B, Vote to Appoint an Official Delegate and an Alternate Delegate for the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Annual Business Meeting on Friday, November ninth, 2012. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there a discussion? Mrs. Principay?
Are we voting to actually send somebody, or just voting that we're going to maybe send somebody?
Sorry. We have two individuals that are going to the meeting. We have Mrs. Donovan and Mrs. McLaughlin who are attending, but it is, we legally have to send an official delegate, so I guess if one of, they want to volunteer, then we'll make an amendment and put their names in there and vote them to go, to be the delegates.
I'll make a motion to amend the motion with the names of the volunteers we clearly had and are not stated in this motion. Second.
Okay. We have an amendment to add Mrs. McLaughlin and Mrs. Donovan as our official delegate and alternate delegate to the Massachusetts Association of School Committee Annual Business Any other discussion? Roll call on that, Max?
The amendment.
Dr. Domingo?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes. Yes, yeah.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Six yes.
All right, so we'll go back to the vote as amended to appoint. I have to do it again, right? Sorry, I'm repeating myself. I apologize, but we're gonna vote to appoint Mrs. Donovan and Mrs. McLaughlin for the Massachusetts Association of School Committee Annual Business Meeting on Friday, November ninth, 2012.
Do we have to specify which is the delegate and which is the alternate?
You really should.
I thought you did, the way you stated the amendment. Max, can you read back the amendment?
Read back the amendment, please, Max.
Who's the delegate? Mrs. Donovan and the alternate?
That's the issue.
We're not sure.
It's reversed, I think.
Reverse it. Mrs. McLaughlin is the delegate and Mrs. Donovan is the alternate.
Right.
Okay.
So that will be Mrs. McLaughlin as the official delegate and Mrs. Donovan as the alternate delegate.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none discussion, we have a roll call vote on that, Max?
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. Domingo?
Yes.
Six yes.
Motion passes. C, Vote to Approve Middle High School Activities and Clubs for the 2012-2013 School Year.
So moved.
Thank you. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, Dr. Domingo?
Yes, Madam Chair. Throw you to Mr. Wiggins? Is that where this came from?
Yes.
I still am not sure that the list we have in front of us lists all the clubs. Maybe, maybe we need to be reminded what the clubs are. I don't believe that senior class, sophomore class, or any classes are clubs. Those are activities that would clearly hold common events and whatnot, but again, is there anything in here that lists a position, a staff position that is being compensated for? I have a couple of examples. Yearbook editor cannot be a club. It's a single-person item. It probably becomes into yearbook activities, so...
You kinda beat me to the punch, because there were a couple of amendments I was going to request. The, under the middle school, I was gonna request that number fourteen, yearbook business be stricken. So you just have yearbook as the activity, and under the high school, number twenty-six, that that should say just yearbook, and number twenty-seven should be stricken. Yearbook is the activity. The only person that is here, and we actually keep it here, though it is not paid from here, is the school treasurer. The reason we retain the school treasurer as a position named here is because the school treasurer is a unique position that because this is student, this is a student activity accounting issue, and because the school treasurer handles student activity accounts, while we do not do it currently, and most school districts, in fact, I would say all school districts in Massachusetts do not do it, okay, because it's typically a collectively bargained position, you could pay for part or all of that stipend from student activity funds. However, if you do that, of course, you take away from the funds that are available for the students for those activities, which is why most school districts do not do it. But to retain it there simply as a, to make sure you don't set a precedent of removing that possibility somewhere down the future is the reason that we keep it there.
I have a follow-up question. When you say school treasurer, and it belongs to a school club, in my mind, any kind of school club should have affiliated student activity with us? Is there any component of the treasurer activity that is student-led?
No, the treasurer is, the treasurer is a position in the school that maintains all of the student activity accounts within the school.
And what person would that be? A teacher? Staff?
That's typically a teacher, and as a stipend, they are paid.
And should that then be listed as a school, as a club?
Excuse me again?
As a club? Should that be listed as a club?
It's listed as a, it's listed as a defined student activity for, again, this is really an accounting, a student activity accounting definition, okay? So that's why that is the kind of unique position here in each of those lists.
Okay. The next one, the said designer at the middle school, would that belong into drama club?
Must've missed that one. Number ten.
Number ten.
At the middle school. Now, that one definitely skipped by me. No, that should not be there. That can be stricken.
Okay.
What should be there, and I wanna make it, is drama. Drama is there.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. There, number five lists music, and we have much more specified music groups that, um, I know exist and, 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 and just the, what kind of music are we talking about?
Well, I think they have sort of a combined band program, and this allows those bands to raise money.
So this is again more for fundraising purposes?
Exactly.
Of certain?
Exactly.
Okay. That, that's on middle school side. On, on high school side, graduation. I may not remember this right, but I don't think that was ever a student activity. That's again, an activity that is coming out of the principal's?
There is funding for, there's funding for, um, diplomas for the actual, if you will, the pomp and circumstance that we put on. But there are graduation events that the students raise money for as part of their graduation. Um, some of that is through the senior class, but some of that is raised as sort of part of graduation. Some districts just keep it as part of the senior class. Others sometimes have two separate fundraisers. Southbridge has apparently done them as two separate entities.
I, I really don't need to, I don't want to belabor this issue. It might sound trivial to, to a lot of people. Is it possible, I of course agree with any and all activities that are proposed. Clearly, uh, there's interest, and if interest is there, they need to be undertaken. Is it possible to, to just go through one more iteration of this document and, and really separate? What are the clubs that students are participating in? It's art club and music club and traditional clubs that, that we're used to. And then what is here for really more activities, fundraising kind of purposes, so we can have a better idea? If somebody asked me, well, how many, how many clubs do you have, student clubs after school? We don't have twenty-seven. I can't say we have twenty-seven clubs because I can't name ten of them. You know what I mean? It's really would be nice to at least see the content separation in my mind. To see what are the students at our school doing in terms of after-school activities and what is here and needs to be approved by us for accounting purposes, line items, funding reasons, whatever it may be. If, if that's acceptable.
We can certainly do that. I mean, we can certainly do that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Mrs. McLaughlin?
Delaying a vote on this tonight delay the ability of any of these clubs to go forward and function?
Let, let me. I guess I would say no, simply from the standpoint of that Southbridge and, dare I say, most school districts in the state have been doing this wrong for years. So from my standpoint, I'm certainly happy to say to the principal, go ahead, start doing whatever you need to do. We'll bring this back. We'll get it approved. And frankly, if we get it approved two weeks from tonight, we'll still be ahead of the game from most school districts who are still, again, doing most of their student activities wrong. So I'm comfortable putting this off two weeks to make sure that everybody here is clear on it. Again, it's the first year we're going to do it to get it right, so again, I'm, I'm comfortable giving the principal a go-ahead to make sure that we're not holding up student activities.
Madam Chair, may I ask another question? I don't see under the high school side drama club. But I just will say that my daughter is in the middle school drama club, and it is a combined kind of group right now that's operating as a combined middle high school drama club. In other words, she's in the middle school in seventh grade, but she is there with seniors and juniors. So I don't know if that goes separately under high school drama or if that...
It doesn't need to.
Okay.
And yet, what I will do, and that may be another good reason to bring it back one more time, is there may be some clubs like that. That I do notice there are two separate art clubs, uh, but the drama club may be a club that is combined, so we can look at that as well.
Okay.
And if there are some clubs that are combined that are six through twelve, we can make that note as well.
And I'm sorry, more, just listen, Madam Chair, I'm sorry. And show choir, is that under triem? Is the show choir considered triem? No, it's not.
Triem is like a non-society for all the students, well, select chorus and band students who excel in music. And, um, what was the other one?
Show choir.
Show choir is a select group of student, well, it's open to anyone who, they just do music and dancing, and it's different from triem.
Do we know if there is show choir up there?
There, there is, but I, I think it might be under corral, number, number five. I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Oh, choral?
Choral. Number five. Mm-hmm.
I guess.
Faith?
I have a question. Does this affect the appointment of advisors?
No.
All right, thank you.
It is a good question.
Anyone else for discussion? Do we need to make a motion to postpone?
Make a motion, I'll make a motion to postpone, uh, this vote. Two weeks, our next, our next meeting, which is?
October twenty-third.
Twenty-third of October.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second to postpone to October twenty-third. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, can I have a roll call vote on that, Max?
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Six yes.
Motion passes. D, vote to approve the destruction of surplus items as provided by Mr. Michael Como.
Just for clarification, I think it's disposal. It's misstated in the agenda.
Oh, we need to have a, a motion and a second, and then we can discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. So moved and seconded. Discussion, Mr. Dr. O'Leary?
Yeah, in, in one of our, our notes, um, it was to sell, dispose, or do with kind of as they saw fit. So I was actually going to comment on destruction too. I don't think going to destroy everything. It's how they will best utilize them, right? It's just put in here, but still.
Just to clarify, I think, I think what actually happened is once you declare it surplus?
Yeah.
It reverts to property of the town when we turn the building over to the town, and they will dispose of it or sell it or whatever they have to.
However they do it, right.
Right. This, this is a little different motion that we're looking for tonight in that we're not only declaring the items on the list as surplus, but we're basically, normally you would declare them surplus and you would authorize myself to dispose of them in the best interest of the town. Because the proceeds always go back to the town because they've generally been purchased from prior year's fiscal, um, year. So the revenue always reverts back to the town so that it can be used for free cash for the benefit of the taxpayers of the community. In this case, what we've done, and we've worked with the town manager on this, because we're also at the point where we are saying, all right, we're kind of done with Wells. And, you know, the town needs to take that over and, and do as they see fit with the Wells Memorial School building. Is we've moved with, and again, working with the town manager, we've moved all of this, these items on this list into Wells. Because ultimately, again, the items would be disposed of however the town feels is in their best interest to get the most money, the best benefit for the town. And so this is a little different in that what we're doing is basically declaring them surplus and then turning both this list of items and the building over to the town officially, saying, take it away, do what you see fit.
Mrs. Donovan? Yes, thank you. Through you to Mr. Wiggins. Um, just for some clarification, a few weeks ago, we had talked about surplus items that were being current, that were stored at the twenty-five Colav Gym at that time, and a lot of that was still in good condition.
Right.
Um, I just want to make sure that this list that's being provided are items that the school district deems no longer usable for the school district. Is that correct? You've kept some of the items that were classified originally as surplus, and these are just things that you've deemed are no longer useful to the district. Is that correct?
That is correct. There are file cabinets that we have kept. There's a, a ton of technology that we have retained that, again, we expect to filter out to the elementary schools. There are some of the newer desks that we had purchased before the new middle high school was completed. We have kept, um, but some of the older desks, which are still, you know, sturdy rugged desks, but we have no need for them. There is no purpose for them. Those, for example, are some of the desks that you would see on the list. There are some old, people are familiar with the old steelcase teacher desks. You know, they're good rugged desks, but they're not ergonomic. They're not used anymore. You know, those are the type of teacher desks that, for example, you know, are on the list. To give you some examples of the type of things that are in Wells that we're, uh, asking you to declare surplus.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Um, yeah, just page two of three, I had to laugh. I saw we're disposing of three babies. Do we mean baby dolls?
I, I do believe we mean baby dolls.
All right. Just want to be clear.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes, through you to, to business manager. There are several items here, um, whose presence, um, you know, sparks my concern, and they all, of course, have to do with science. I see thirteen microscopes. I see an incubator. I see Mettler wing machine, um, or a balance, if you wish. Was our science department deciding that these items are of no longer of any use?
None, none of those items actually work, and yes, they did review each and every one of those items.
I, I would like to, um, find a way to visit the storage of these items, and I would like to personally look at them because this, um, you know, microscopes don't need to be much. Sometimes you replace a light bulb, and a second grader can use it for, for years to look at bugs and leaves and, and all sorts of things. I, I think these are resources that if we were smart, um, we might be able to turn around for maybe lower grades and not, not middle high school necessarily. Mettler, uh, I can tell you, I just bought one in my lab in Worcester. These things can cost up to seven thousand dollars, a good Mettler balance. I'm surprised to see it on the list. There, there's just a few, and similar with, with some instruments and instrument parts that are listed here as surplus, I think. If there is anything, and I have no doubt that our staff and faculty have gone through these things, and, uh, sometimes things fall through the cracks. Everybody's excited moving. They want new stuff. Some old stuff stays behind. I, I don't know how we go about it, but I would really like to have an opportunity to at least see what we are disposing of before we actually dispose of, if that's, if that's all right. Oh, two pottery kilns? Are we not having pottery? Those are atrociously expensive furnaces, aren't they?
But there, there are, there are new kilns at the new middle high school. We have, we have no place to, we have no place or purpose for these kilns. So again, they, they may be a functional item. We have no, it's, again, the Hobart mixer that you see on here. Those are perfectly good mixers, but we have brand-new mixers at the middle high school. So again, the town would dispose of them, hopefully get a good price for those, and that money would go back into the town coffers.
And I, am I right in assuming that all this has been considered if we are going to be, um, having part of the high, old high school building outfitted maybe for alternative programs?
Yes. We have, we have moved items, for example, the kitchen. We have moved items from the Wells kitchen, um, either, in fact, in some case, we played a shell game. We moved some stuff out of the high school kitchen into our elementary kitchens, and in turn moved things out of Wells into the high school kitchen. But the mixers in question, we simply have no need for them. There's no, there's no need for a backup. These, these simply are superfluous. Uh, in two of the mixers cases, we haven't used them for years.
Madam Chair, just to you, um, I, I in principle agree, of course, that we need to turn this over to town. Is it, is it possible to me, procedurally, I don't know, if we vote yes and approve this, can I talk to the town manager and ask? Once this becomes town property, probably I have just as much right to inquire about these items as anyone else. So there's no need for any particular permission to see these items, right?
Right. I would assume that once it's handed over to the town manager, then you would speak with him.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
I'm just wondering, did we change destruction to disposal yet?
I don't think we have to.
We don't have to. Okay, then yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. E, vote to waive all readings on an emergency basis per the state and submit the emergency plan file E B C.
So moved.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. Is there a discussion? Mrs. McLaughlin?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. This is one of the policies that the Mass Association of School Committees, uh, sent to us and strongly recommended that each school committee adopt the policy and the D E S E model plan on an emergency basis in order to comply with, um, a planned submission requirement. Um, and that we would carefully, the charge would be that we carefully review this policy and plan as the school year progresses, but this would be our baseline policy going forward. There's an existing policy. Um, I provided everybody with that. Uh, and you can see that the existing policy versus the proposed policy is quite extensive. It's my understanding this policy will be available for the public or would be available in Mr. Illy's office for viewing. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote, Max?
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. F, move that the Southbridge School Committee authorize the Director of Finance and Operations to write a letter to the town manager requesting that the school district take possession of the seventy Foster Street property in exchange for the current school maintenance facility located at eleven West Street in the former Globe Firehouse. So have a motion? Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. A motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Dr. O'Leary?
Can you help me with the specifics of that?
Sure.
Mr. Wiggins?
And why? Back in the spring, um, the former school committee had a subcommittee of Mr. Lozo, Mr. Como, and myself to look at the use of facilities, and one of the things we were looking at was the Globe Fire Building. Um, it's about thirty-five hundred square feet. It basically has two garage bays, um, which would be the only place where we could park vehicles, work on vehicles, be the shop, and, and frankly, we have more vehicles than that. It's, it's a small building, okay? We also, in the course of looking at all the buildings and talking about the use of all the buildings, including Colav, we looked at seventy Foster Street. Seventy Foster Street is about eighteen thousand square feet. It has a loading dock. It has, um, ample off-road parking. It has a significant bay area that we could house vehicles inside, but more importantly, we could have workspace inside. It would provide significant storage that we do not have currently. And storage has become even more of an issue, believe it or not, even though we have Col Avenue. And it's easy to think about Col Avenue. You have all those empty classrooms. Gee, you have all that storage space. Well, it's not all convenient for storage. And frankly, it's all gotten used up fairly fast because there is very little storage at the new middle high school. As you all know, the MSBA is kind of frowns upon paying for storage even though you need it in any kind of school building, as we all know. It really kind of made sense to us that the Foster Street building was a much more practical building for our maintenance department to be located in, for them to be able to work out of. Okay? Where they could have a bigger shop, where they could be able to do more projects. Being able to do more projects means less projects that go to outside contractors. That means we save money by having our own people do it. It allows us the capacity to bring in, uh, larger centralized purchasing, even if you don't centralize purchase everything. For example, right now, I can't really bring in, uh, for example, for copy paper. I can't bring in full trailer load of paper anywhere in the district. Not even to the new middle high school. Because there's no place I can offload forty-four pallets of paper. I can do that at seventy Foster Street, but I can't do that anywhere else. So just for district purposes, quite frankly, it seemed like a more practical building for us to use. I also think, quite frankly, and we thought as a subcommittee, that the Globe building has more viability to the town to either lease or to sell than Foster Street. And in fact, I know of at least one party that has expressed some interest in renting the property. And I have to tell you that I, I still think that this is a property that begs for like an HDTV project where it becomes a residence above those two bays and you have under-residence parking. I just, it just begs for it. But that's just me. At any rate, I digress. Beyond the, the ability to do the kind of purchasing and warehousing, by the way, we right now have warehouse, we're warehousing things in storage trailers and on Gulfwood Road because we don't have the space right now. So that's a problem for us, and this solves that problem once and for all, in our opinion. So I just think it's a good business decision. Uh, I do think it's a decision that the town can take advantage of as well, so I do think it's a win-win. The committee, um, through Mr. Lozo, did, as I understand it, have sort of an informal discussion with the town manager who said, well, we would need a letter to, you know, kind of start... well, we would need a letter to, you know, kind of start the process and consider it, and that's why the request is before you tonight.
Mrs. Principe?
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, Dr. O'Leary.
Thanks.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Wigan. What is the financial impact? I realize the motion is just an exchange of the building. What is the financial impact as far as electricity and heating and telephone or whatever? Has that been determined yet?
Most of the heating can still be contained into, you know, basically one area. We would not need to heat the storage areas to any significant amount. So the heating actually would be about the same. And the way I describe the building, again, to borrow what you hear sometimes in the housing market, it's got great bones. There had been a water problem in the past. That has been corrected. Roof's in good shape. And quite frankly, when I've walked through it a couple of different times, I've discussed it at great length with our Director of Maintenance. Clearly, anything that we would have to do, and quite frankly, we don't see that we do have anything we would have to do, but if there is something, we frankly can handle it internally.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. Donovan?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I just wanted, just for the public's knowledge, that the property that we're talking to on 70 Foster Street is the old Southbridge Water Company. It's the one on the corner of North and Foster that has all the vines growing up on the side of the walls. I guess my, and the question that I have is, Madam Chair, through you to Mr. Wigan, you touched upon it just a little bit. The building itself, I know, has been abandoned for a while, and they did have some plumbing issues inside. And I was just wondering, the overall, you said it had good bones, I think is what you said. But the overall condition of it is, was my concern, with it being abandoned, will there be any costs to fix it up, or does it require work? Is there any money that we're going to have to put into that building before the maintenance department can actually use it?
Just, the building is not abandoned right now. It, right now, I think is being used by the Center of Hope as a storage facility, and so it is being used currently. So it's not, I don't think ever been totally empty or totally abandoned. It might have been at one time, but since I've been here, I've been through the building about four times, and the Center of Hope has got a lot of stuff in there. So it's not, I guess, totally abandoned, and the building has some potential, I think.
And if I can just expand on that, I think the things that we would be doing there are not so much to make it ready because it's not ready. They would be things that we could add that we can't do at the Globe, okay? For example, things that we would, because we now have the space, okay, to, for example, expand our shop. We just talked about Wells a few minutes ago, but Wells, for example, has some, in its old shop, has some nice big old tables that we might go back to the town manager and say, before you dispose of those big old tables, which are great contractor tables, can we haul out a couple of those and install those in the new building if there's a swap that's made? We've talked about putting a hoist in there, okay, which would allow us to do certain work, which we can't do right now. Now again, we have to find that money within the current budget. If the money isn't there, we're just going to have to wait. But the point being, they're not things we would have to do because we have to do them to make it usable now. It would be things that we would be doing because they're an investment in being able to expand what we can do overall for the district.
Okay. I guess my concern is, the devil is always in the details.
Absolutely.
And we're looking for now, I guess, just to write the letter, but I don't want to get, I fully, let me just back up. I think that this is a wonderful opportunity for the maintenance department. I'm very familiar with the building itself and the capability and what it could actually provide for our school maintenance department. So I'm not against the building. What I am cautious of is what comes down. Once this letter is written and the exchange occurs, we need to make sure we have a good idea going into it, what we want to be doing in there, what we want to see a hoist lift, other things, so that you don't come back to us, and now we need to find all this money to refurbish a building. And I just want to make sure, be clear that that doesn't happen.
And I would say that it certainly would be my intent, and I think it's, I think would always be the intent, whenever the school district was ever talking about acquiring or in this case swapping property, that we'd want to do one more very intense, very formal inspection, make sure that, you know, any, while I say it has good bones, I want to make sure that if there's any skeletons in the closet, they get exposed, you know, before we finalize it. This is really a first step to explore the possibility of the trade.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please?
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principe?
Yes.
Six yes.
Motion passes. G, move that the Southbridge School Committee authorize the Director of Finance and Operations to create a technology committee for the purpose of creating a three-year technology plan with the progress update to be made to the committee in January of 2013, a plan outline proposed in February 2013, and a final plan narrative proposed in May of 2013.
Sumo.
Thank you. A motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Wiggins, do you want to?
I'm sorry, just sharing my agenda.
No problem.
We've talked for a while that we really need to create this committee on a couple of different levels. One, as you know, for E-Rate, you need to have a regular, ongoing technology plan, and we're really due to set up a new technology plan anyways for E-Rate purposes. But more importantly, to really have a truly meaningful technology plan, you really need to pull together a broad-based group, not only in-house, to make sure you're in-house different, if you will, parties are representative, to make sure you involve the community as well, and to develop a plan that looks at it, and I always call it short and intermediate term, because you really can't plan out much more than three years. It'd be nice if we could, but as we all know, technology moves and changes very, very fast. The makeup you see here is one that I've used successfully in other districts before, most recently in Georgetown. And you'll see that we have a sort of a tri-chair setup using existing staff. And the reason we do that is we use a technology person as one of the tri-chairs, if you will, an operations person, myself is one of the tri-chairs, and a curriculum person. In this case, Amy Allen is one of the tri-chairs. So that we kind of try to cover all three bases, but it also spreads that load of making sure that we keep things moving. And then you'll see that there are a number of different people that would be invited to be a part of that. The only people that, as I noted, invited their option to participate is the town representatives. But I think in the case of everyone else, I think it's fairly sure that they will be, there will be members who will participate. We've already had some, because these kinds of things get out there, we've already had some public members who have expressed some interest. We would advertise to solicit more formal input and more formal interest. A number of teachers, a number of administrators have expressed interest. So I don't think there's going to be any problem getting the membership of this committee.
Anyone else? Any more questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principe?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Six yes.
Motion passes. Agenda item number 13, unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business this evening? Dr. D'Amico?
Madam Chair, I would really like to request that we think about adding an additional member to every appointed subcommittee. We have just, I have just discovered that we have only two full members in every subcommittee, and if it ever comes to any kind of disagreement, there is absolutely no mechanism to have a recommendation come out of the subcommittee meeting because the vote would be split one to one. I think every year so far, we have had two regular members, three regular members and an alternate. Alternate does not vote when only regular members are present. So if you have only two members, the vote can go one-one, and you have spent an hour and a half or two hours discussing an important issue, and there's no resolution, there's no recommendation coming to the full school committee. To avoid that, I would like to ask that you ask who would be willing to take the third spot on every subcommittee. Thank you.
You're welcome. I will revisit that, and I will send out emails asking individuals. Anyone else for unfinished business? Mrs. McLaughlin?
I have a few different things. Through you to Mr. Illy, you had talked about having somebody come in and explain the MICA.
Yes.
Could somebody maybe at some time too, we have a lot of acronyms we throw around, but come and explain the PBIS training and maybe like hit all the?
Yes. PBIS, I will have somebody come talk to you about, one of the coaches or two of the coaches will come.
Just because I've heard that several times, even tonight in a prior meeting, and I think it would be good to let the public know. Madam Chair, may I say a couple more things?
Yes.
Quickly, the PTA book fairs were a huge success, probably the most successful in over a decade, as well as the attendance of the reconfigured school open houses. I think that's a very good thing. I attended a PTA meeting last week, and they have every intention of turning all of their profits over, or they will be buying books for the schools with the proceeds of the book fair. So that's a really good thing. Want to congratulate them on a job well done. I just want the public to know that something that recently came across my desk through the Community Health Network is that Sir Deniere Walker, she's the mom of a middle school student who unfortunately committed suicide in 2009. She's going to be coming as a speaker to Tantascwa on Tuesday, October 16th at 7:00. It's a free, it's a free presentation. She's coming to speak about bullying and anti-bullying initiatives in the state of Massachusetts. And that was an invitation that was extended to our community through the Tri-Town Domestic Violence Task Force. So I'd like the public to be aware that they can attend that presentation if they want to listen to Ms. Walker speak about her very sad experience. And another thing I just wanted to mention is a resident of Torrey Road contacted me and basically was talking about curb appeal going into the new school and that there's piles of rocks there, and mentioned to me that perhaps Bay Path would be willing to create a wall, build kind of like a beautiful wall as an entry there, and maybe even also to elevate that sign. The Southbridge Middle High School sign is so low to the ground, one good snow is going to cover that sign. And I'm wondering if perhaps if we contacted the vocational director at the school about taking this project on, not necessarily right now, but if they could fit it in during the school year, to make a coordinating base for that sign, just to raise it up a little bit, give it a little bit more prominence. And if the district was so interested, that a letter just wouldn't need to be written to the vocational director, something I'm thinking about. I think that's it.
Anyone else for unfinished business? Mrs. Donovan?
Yes, thank you. Through you to Mr. Wigan. I believe it was perhaps our colleague, Mr. Lozo, that had brought this up at our last meeting relative to the school lunches, how the portions have diminished considerably relative to the chicken nuggets and other proteins in the dinners. And I just, I thought you had mentioned that you had some information on that, and I didn't know if you could share that with us.
I do.
Thank you.
It is a federal guideline, and basically, the long and the short of it is the federal guidelines this year have reduced the proteins by 50%. So for example, last year when we would give, for example, four nuggets, now we can only give two. Four ounces to two ounces a day is really the simple measure. However, one of the things we implemented starting last week, and I'm not sure how it's going over, it's still probably early, is we did find out that there is not a limit on the number of servings that we can provide of fruits and vegetables. There's a minimum to make it an eligible meal for reimbursement, but there is not a maximum. So basically, the instructions that were given starting last week were if students at the middle high school, and for that matter, at any school, though I think it's been less of an issue at the elementary schools, want to come back for seconds or thirds of vegetables, then they are welcome to do that. If they want seconds or thirds of fruit, they are welcome to do that. If they want to come and they want to take six bananas, let them take six bananas. We may run out of some things initially. We will figure that out. We will order more. And, you know, I think in general, I think everybody would agree that obviously having more fruits and vegetables is generally healthier. It is probably not the solution that every parent or every student would like to hear, but it is what we can do under the guidelines. So that is what we have done to try and, you know, deal with the issue of, you know, understandably feeling like, you know, the meals are not filling because understandably they were not. And by the way, it's not just protein. It was also basically a 50% reduction in grains. So it's kind of a double whammy. So more fruits and vegetables can be provided and are being allowed and offered. Grains and proteins significantly have been reduced.
And not to interrupt, but just so you know, we will be having a presentation, I believe, at our next meeting.
Yes.
From the food service.
Oh, great.
So we will be able to answer questions then.
Yep.
Anything else?
Yeah, please. Just through you to Faith, I was just curious, have you seen a change or people, your friends getting more fruits and vegetables, or have you noticed that there's been an increase?
Unfortunately, no.
Okay.
I would say most of the student body doesn't prefer vegetables or fruit. They like the real stuff.
The oil.
Thank you.
I get it.
Anyone else? Mrs. Principe?
Based on tonight's adoption of the new emergency plans and waiving our three readings, I just want to ensure that any policy that we do adopt does get placed on the website.
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure that happens. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number 14, new business. A, the next regular school committee meeting will be held on October 23rd, 2012 Council Chambers. B, first reading of updated policies. We have several policies that need to be updated. This will be the first reading of that. I don't know if, I think we can lump them all in one great sum. Dr. D'Amico?
I'd like to move to waive the first reading for policies one through 12 as listed on today's agenda.
Second.
Thank you. I'll have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mrs. Principe?
I just want to remind everybody that these policies are available in the superintendent's office for review if anybody cares to do so, because this isn't voted finally. I think we're two additional meetings or readings.
It'll be in November, yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes, I just want to draw attention to the fact that number three, the nondiscrimination on the basis of sex file ACA is actually a new policy. It's Title IX. We didn't have it in our policy manual. We had no ACA, so that is a new policy. The rest of them are policies that existed and have, need to be amended to comply with the law, as said before. And I also do question if number 10, JFBB-1, is needed. In rereading that policy, which deals with school choice, it is like an alternate policy in the event that the district does not adopt school choice. So I'm not sure if we adopt that as a provisional, but...
We can look into that in between the readings and then have it finalized.
Okay.
Before the final reading. Anyone else? Seeing none, can we have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principe?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Six yes.
Motion passes to waive the first reading. Agenda item number 15, executive, oh, yes.
Can I add something to the new, to the new business?
Yes, sorry. Go right ahead.
Thank you. I understand that MCAS scores came out on September 17th or 18th. You told us a while ago. I would like to ask that we schedule a presentation of performance data for the district.
Schedule for the next meeting.
Oh, great. Excellent. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to item 15, executive session. Vote to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for union and non-union personnel or litigation to the extent that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the governmental body pursuant to Chapter 30A, Section 21, Part 3.
Sumo.
Thank you. We'll have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principe?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan? Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Six yes.
And we will adjourn executive to come out to just adjourn from open meeting.